Vice President Eliza here. Comanche Nishla, 1200 busses chin. Out of Comanche Des Chay, Quashte Des Chanel. It's good to be with you this morning here. August 17th. This is the day the Lord has made this for us. And be glad. We appreciate you. Here we are on the first day of coming back to work. And let's get started with a word of prayer. And then Jonathan Nez, the Navajo Nation Vice President, will address you all. Yeah, Shedi and God, we thank you, Lord, that you woke us up with another day of life, Lord. You breathe the air into our lungs, the breath of life. Lord, and we pray for those, Lord, that are sick, Lord, and are struggling, Lord, in this time due to hardship, Lord, due to the COVID virus. Lord, Father, we come against it and just pray that you, Lord, you will be done on earth as it is in heaven. We pray, Father, that many would turn to you, Lord, Father, for healing, for salvation, for just every good thing, Lord. Lord, we thank you that even in times like this here, Father, there are good things that come out of it. Father, family strengthened, Lord, marriages brought back together, Father, friendships restored, relationships strengthened. Lord, we are a nation, Father, that dwells on you, Lord, and leadership on down. Father God, we look for your good grace, Lord, Father, your mercy, Father. They're made new every morning, we're reminded, Father, in Scripture. So, Lord, we give you this time, ask you to be with us, be with our people, Lord. Strengthen the nation, Lord, as you strengthen each individual. Lord, we pray that your wisdom, Father, would prevail, for that is the principal thing, Lord. We shouldn't pray for riches, we shouldn't pray for many things, Lord, but other than wisdom, Father. We thank you that we can come together, Father, under the umbrella of your love, your grace, and your mercy. Father, we thank you, can ask you to be with our nation today and all the workers, Lord, that are returning. As they come back, Father, we pray that you protect them, protect those, Lord, Father, that would lay hand to the work of running out of Navajo Nation tribal government, Father, for it is no small thing. Father, and I pray for all those, Lord, Father, that are a little hesitant to come into work. Father, strengthen them, guard them up, Lord, Father, and grant them a confidence, Lord, that every measure has been taken, Father. And, Lord, we pray for your protection, Father, on all of the nation and all the workers and their families. In Jesus' name, Father, we pray, amen. Thank you. Now, as we said here, we have a line of speakers, Dr. Jim, Department of Navajo Health, also Dr. Perfilia Fowler, the Human Resources Director, and also our Attorney General, historian McPaul. And so I believe there may be some others as well. But first and foremost, our President of the great Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez. Yeah, take it away, sir.
All right, thank you, Vice President, for the prayer and for the insight of, you know, how the Navajo Nation has been running since we started our tenure. You know, we always lift our prayers to the Creator for wisdom, for protection, for strength and good health. And today we have a message for the Navajo Nation employees and the Navajo Nation people. And that's what the Town Hall will be all about regarding the COVID-19 and the reopening. Who would have known that we would be going through a pandemic and now a public health emergency here on the Navajo Nation? Nobody would have known that we would be going through some tough times in these four years. And I appreciate our 24th Navajo Nation Council, our elected officials from the chapters, school boards, farm boards, grazing representatives, land boards, and many others. And, you know, we bring this message to you just to update you on what's happening here on the Navajo Nation and to let our Navajo Nation employees know too that we appreciate the hard work they have been doing these past five months as we have been shut down, we have administrative leave, and as we transition to a slow reopening. And I'm going to make our message more in English because Navajo Nation employees should be able to understand the English because we have so much information to give to our Navajo, the Navajo Nation employees. And so we are doing our very best through these trying times. And one thing too that I wanted to highlight is that we signed into law yesterday $475 million worth of CARES Act funding. And we line item $176 million, line item vetoed because many of these projects were not project ready and cannot be completed based on our assessment by the end of December 30th of this year. One element that was missing is direct relief to our Navajo people from the first package. There were, we've gotten emails of people that are wanting help with their bills, help with groceries, help with propane, help with our elders. And you know what? We are going to make sure that $177 million of that go directly to the Navajo people. And we are confident that we will spend all of that $177 million of direct aid by the end of December 30th of this year. And that's for our college students. Those are for also our students that are going back to school, helping our teachers, getting additional broadband, resources, internet, high-speed internet for our people, and direct aid. Meaning that giving propane to our elders for the winter so we can prepare, giving those folks that are struggling right now with help to pay their bills, get the groceries, and really get prepared for the winter. And so that's going to be our focus. And that legislation will be introduced this week by our council delegates. And so we wanted to make sure that you all know that because that's news. And I know that people are asking what happened. Whenever you hear line item vetoed, the first thing that goes into your mind is the whole thing got vetoed. So if you want to complain or if you want to have some negative comments, please be a little bit more informed of what's happening within your Navajo government before you comment about certain negativities. And so that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure that you are informed and that much and all of the $715 million will be allocated for the Navajo people. Navajo Nation employees, essential workers, those of you that have been working for the past five months providing direct services, we say thank you. Thank you to you. And, you know, I know that this is some scary times, uncertain times, but you are willing and able to help during these trying times. So we want to appreciate you. Those of you that were on administrative leave and you stayed home, thank you for doing that because overall we helped each other out throughout the Navajo Nation to bring these numbers down. As of today, 88,461 people have been tested. That's over 40% of our Navajo population. Positive tests, 9,447. Of those 9,447, 6,970 have recovered from COVID-19. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the 480 families who have lost loved ones. Let's continue to hold them in prayer. And over the past couple of weeks now, we've seen a decline in cases. And that's because we're wearing masks, we're social distancing, we're washing our hands with soap and water, we're using hand sanitizers and staying home as much as we can. And we can see the gradual decrease in COVID positive cases. Now, the Navajo Nation provides services, direct services to our Navajo people. And the Navajo people have stated, when will the offices be reopened? Because many of them are wanting to move their paperwork forward, maybe homesite lease or resources. Some of those resources and offices have been slow to get those direct aid to our Navajo people. And so we felt now is the time to reopen. But when I say reopen, it's a gradual reopen. Meaning some of our employees will still continue to work from home, telework, while others will be at the offices. Through these five weeks, we had over 50% of our Navajo employees working at their workstation as well. And so our transition is to get some of our offices reopened so that we can provide direct services. And that's why we all get paid. We get paid by the Navajo people, from the Navajo people. And some of our Navajo people are struggling. And we need to provide them the resources and the support. And with that said, that means that we have to also continue to be diligent in our workplace. Where we work right now, we need to take care of ourselves. We have masks, homemade masks that have been made. Our goal is to get 10 of those homemade masks to all of our Navajo Nation employees so that you can use them interchangeably and they're washable. Our offices are transitioning to social distancing. And offices are being reconfigured for spacing. We do have hand sanitizers that have been purchased and donated. And those are going to be within our workplace. So if you do not have those tools, you know, we have been giving out the word to pick up your items through your managers and through your division. And if you have yet to do that, please call the Health Command Operations Center or office and let us know. So again, it's going to be a phased-in reopening starting today. And the administrative leave has ended today as well. But some are going to be working with their managers and their division directors to work from home. Those that have other needs, maybe you're caring for your elder or you're caring for at-risk individual at home, you know, working with your division director and your managers, you can continue to work from home. But you will be required to have assignments and tasks to be done. And this is not administrative leave anymore. This is keeping our Navajo Nation government in operation. So we ask that you protect yourself and your colleagues. And we again ask you to not travel on your downtime. Because if you catch that virus and you bring it into your workplace, you're not just putting yourself at risk, you're putting the whole organization at risk. And protect yourself at all times. Be aware of your surroundings. Follow the guidelines. We just sent out a memo regarding the return-to-work protocols signed by myself and Vice President Eliza that has phone numbers if you have any questions. And it also mentions that the Human Resources Department, Dr. Fowler, will be talking shortly about those protocols and what happens if there is a compromise or you get compromised outside of your workplace. And you need to be forthcoming to your direct supervisor about those situations. And please do not, and I reiterate, do not, you know, hold the truth from the Navajo Nation leadership and compromise the rest of our employees. We are going into uncharted territory here. There is still no vaccine. But we are going to be working on helping our Navajo Nation employees. And keep your workplace clean. You should be getting cleaning products, either it's Lysol, Clorox, or hand wipes. Keep your workstations clean. It's not entirely the duties of facilities maintenance. You, as an employee, should keep your workplace clean at all times. Managers, those folks that are in position of leadership, I respectfully ask you to, you know, treat your employees the way you want to be treated. That means even listening to what the situations they are going through at home or even at work. And also giving them the needed necessities to get these things accomplished. Keeping your workspace clean, keeping your personal protection equipment, those should be provided. And we've been working on this reopening plan for weeks now. Weeks, because we've been extending the administrative leave and the closure for many weeks now. And so we've been preparing. And now is the day that we are moving forward in reopening our Navajo Nation government. Businesses will also be having protocols as well. So Eli, get JT Willie on the call. JT will be talking about businesses as well on the Town Hall meeting today. And this is the first time we're going through this, ladies and gentlemen, Navajo Nation employees in our generation. And you all are doing an excellent, outstanding job by getting the information out to your employees, out to your Navajo Nation citizens. And you see that. The hard work has brought the numbers down here on the Navajo Nation. And I congratulate you and I commend each and every one of you through our prayers. We have seen what the Creator has done here on the Navajo Nation. So if someone asks you, how did the Navajo Nation get their numbers down? Let's point to God and say, God answered our prayers and brought those numbers down. And if we continue to pray to God, we will continue to keep these numbers down. And with the hard work that you all are doing, we can push this virus off our nation. So work together and help each other out throughout these trying times. There's a lot of mental issues that may be coming from this. You know, it is a scary moment. You know, as Vice President and I and our team and many of you traveled through 110 chapters when we're giving out food and supplies, we heard directly from the Navajo people that they are in need of support. And many of them said they have been praying for us and praying for the Navajo Nation. So remember that. People are praying for you, Navajo Nation employees. People are praying for the Navajo Nation as a whole. Each division and each program has a reopening plan. And that should be there available for you to get reacquainted with, that is in writing. And we are asking that Navajo Nation employees acknowledge the reopening plans and also the divisions' plans for moving forward. So beginning today, there will be no more administrative leave. And we're back to regular operation. But as Dr. Fowler will mention, you know, there is COVID leave for those that are directly impacted by the virus. Continue to wear your masks, wash your hands with soap and water, hand sanitizers at your office, utilize that. Always wear your mask, no matter where you're at. If you're clocked in from 8:00 to 5:00 or any other different time, some of you may be working from 6:00 to 12:00, different hours. Some of you may be working in the evening and weekends. Always, if you are working and clocked in on the Navajo Nation, you are required to wear a mask at all times. And so we're discouraging drinking, drinks, and eating food items because that's when you take off your mask, when you drink water, coffee, or eating food around other people. So we're discouraging, you know, food being purchased by your division. I'm sorry, but we have to do this for the protection of everybody. Please do not eat as a group because that's when your masks come off. And keep that in mind as we move forward, ladies and gentlemen. And again, those are the numbers right now on the Navajo Nation employees. I know many of you are happy that you're able to get back to work. I know some of you have, since our schools are online now, you have young children at home and work with your division director, work with your manager on the flexible time, also working at home as well. I understand we don't have, our daycare centers are not reopening as well. Our parks and recreation, our tribal parks out there will remain closed because our Navajo Nation Council approved a resolution that says that all visitors are not to be here on Navajo. Of course, they're doing interstate travel through our nation. They go right through our nation. Until that resolution gets rescinded, there is supposed to still be no visitors doing business here on the Navajo Nation. And that includes people that are going to our parks. But I did say that we will reopen our parks to our Navajo Nation citizens. And so we are going to be looking at transitioning into that. Right now, we're working on how we're going to regulate that. But there shouldn't be no visitors at our parks because of that law that we, Vice President and I, signed that's saying that there's supposed to be no visitors on the Navajo Nation. So we got to follow through on that law. I know some people, news reporters and media have said that the Navajo Nation is opening back up to our visitors and our parks and are going to be open. But we can't arbitrarily do that unless that resolution gets rescinded because that resolution stated that no visitors on Navajo Nation until the public health emergency, that emergency declaration ends. The emergency declaration is not ending today. It continues on because it's still a public health emergency. So that means that the ban for our visitors stays in place until we address this resolution. If the council wants to rescind that. But I think today we recognize that we need to keep our Navajo people safe and then vice versa, our visitors safe. So we will not be opening our parks to our visitors. So keep that in mind until that law gets reevaluated. But at this point, our stance is that the parks should not reopen to our visitors. So there is a notification for Phase 1, return-to-work protocols for our executive branch employees. That will be sent out to your email today stating a lot of the items that I mentioned. Gives you phone numbers as well if you have any questions to Department of Health number, Health Command Operations Center number, Department of Personnel Management phone number, and NOSHA phone numbers. And feel free to call our office if you have any other questions as well. And so our prayers are with all of us as we return to work. And we'll be, as you know, we've been out there during this pandemic as well, Vice President and I. And we have, you know, we, as long as we follow those public health protocols, you will be safe. That means you take care at home, yourself at home, you wear your mask, you do those CDC guideline protocols, follow through on that, and you'll be okay. The reason why I say that is we visited 110 chapters. We visited a lot of the communities out there. We weren't sitting in our offices all that time. We were out there, listening to many of our Navajo Nation employees. So we were shoulder to shoulder with many of you out there, providing services. And guess what, ladies and gentlemen? Because we did safety checks, we followed protocol, we kept each other accountable. Not one of our Navajo Nation employees, our partners, came down with COVID-19 during these food and supply distributions. So let that be a model, let that be an encouragement to you that we can safely reopen the Navajo Nation if we follow through on the CDC guidelines. There's many other things I'd like to mention, but, you know, based on time, I'll say that much. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for not translating. I'm sorry for not translating in Navajo. We got a, a long uh lineup of, of uh uh speakers today. And if you have uh an elder that doesn't understand English with you or your colleague, you know, translate it to the Navajo language for us. So thank you so much. I'm turning the time over to our Vice President, Myron Lizer. He has been a, a great champion for us, advocating for the Navajo Nation out, uh, out there and bringing in needed resources for our Navajo people. So thank you so much for the work that you have been doing, Vice President, and I'll turn the time over to you. God bless you, everybody, Navajo Nation employees.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, and likewise, your stellar leadership has us at this point of uh opening up government and uh, as many would say, you know, from a pandemic scare and fear to uh now confidence in opening up. I'm with you, Mr. President. I believe we can open up and open up safely. So as we do do that, uh, just uh maybe a little uh backdrop on where we are and just like President as well. Uh, we have an esteemed line of uh presenters here after myself that uh I'll try not to take too much time. But uh, welcome back, all of you workers in every community, every city across our, our, our great nation here. Um, it's good to give back. It's also good to um, you know, see that we can give back, right? That means our numbers have flattened and continually decreased and uh ours has been that. It, it is getting um uh smaller numbers and um the areas aren't uh spiking uh as they have been in the past. So um this on the uh beginning of fall and winter. So uh the need to still remain vigilant on our protocol and um what we do and how we live our lives and conduct ourselves at the, the workplace, uh, being professional and also still adhering to uh proper sanitization and uh proper um, um social distancing with masks, gloves if need be and the like. So again, I'll not go there. Uh, I'll probably have others that'll speak on that. But really, just uh, if you remember back in late January, early February, we started hearing some, some things on the news about uh this thing called COVID nineteen, right? And uh, it took some time for it to uh resonate with us. It took some time to uh, to uh for us to fully integrate it into our understanding and be cognizant of uh what it really meant. And should it ever come to Navajo, you know, what would we do? And lo and behold, uh, it, it did. If you remember, uh, early March, it started to uh hit us in Washington and in Oregon and California and then, and then other places. Uh, you know, it was a quick migrating um, uh virus that is just by contact. So um, obviously, people didn't know they had it and they would transfer it to others and, you know, in large crowds and whatnot. So that's where we see the genesis of it. And that's where we really feel like we can affect the mitigation of it and, and, and actually ceasing it affecting our people. Simply wearing a mask, we are keeping proper distancing, avoiding large crowds and um, you know, sanitizing regularly and often. So there was an old saying, you know, and our, our typing up our Word documents, right? Save early, save often. Well, for COVID nineteen, wash early, wash often, be safe, stay alive. And so we really do um think we can uh, uh provide um uh back to normal daily operations of our tribal government. So here we are, uh, August seventeenth, uh, and now we're seven months, you know, uh, from uh the genesis of this all. And uh, again, our prayers will prevail. Uh, our prayers are, are very powerful. And so we pray for you uh from the leaders top down. And uh, also if you could join us all, and, and I know many of you do. Many of you also, uh, you know, could stand to incorporate prayer, a prayer life into your daily routine. It is, it is very powerful. It's very um, uh, revealing to uh God's hand in our life if we merely seek Him and give Him His preeminence. And so, you know, uh, at this time, I, I'd just like to highlight uh again, you know, the, uh, what President has said, our phased-in approach. Uh, I'll just be touching on some subjects. And again, we have our other esteemed colleagues here in our um, our cabinet who will be uh really detailing for us what this is gonna look like. And so if there's any fear out there, please uh, uh, do not fear. And uh, just uh, you know, if you have faith as small as a mustard seed, uh, you could do wonders with that. And so we'll pray for you until your faith is strong enough that you could pray for your office and your coworkers. And when God forbid, somebody should uh become ill, that uh, you know, we can all be trained, properly trained and prepared on how to handle this. And so no, and no more spiking for us. But uh, as we come back to work, let us all uh recommit ourselves. Let's, let us all, you know, know that this is different. This is unlike anything that we've ever had to do. As Mr. President has said, you know, we uh have never had to work during a virus. We've had a shutdown for such a long time. And now here we are back at work. The work of the nation needs to continue and there'll always be a tension, right? Not, not, you know, protecting the lives and, and opening up and opening up safely and recovering safely. So we feel we're there now. And you'll hear uh much more from um Dr. Jill Jim, our Director of uh Health here on Navajo. But um, we're at a time now where uh we must press forward and uh we feel like we have a a handle on the protocol in which to mitigate the spread of this virus, but also uh the need to uh go forth. And government must continue. And uh, as we uh spend this CARES Act funding, uh, we need all hands on deck. And so we'll continue to need all of you all. And so again, uh, from the Vice President and the President, uh, we are praying for you, for your safety, for your family's safety. And there's the protocols that are out there to rely on, to ensure and mitigate the spread of the virus and uh to remind you all that we are you know, without taking too much more time, I just wanna uh acknowledge those that may be feeling a little bit apprehensive about coming to work. I understand, we understand. And we'll answer all of your questions and we'll get and uh make sure that all of our workforce is confident, just like we are, that uh we can fight this and we can work in and around this year. And so as long as we, you know, just uh follow the protocols again, which are gonna be highlighted numerous, numerous, numerous times, please encourage others if you have a full uh knowledge and full practice of the, the the health protocols of this emergency and uh help others, you know, with any fear or hesitation and just, you know, uh, stop to listen to them to take in whatever they're uh sharing with you. Um, and uh, you know, we'll be stronger. When we um, this virus is all gone, we'll look at it this time and, and, and we'll reflect and we'll say, wow, you know, that's where we came together, that's where we got stronger, and that's where our nation advanced forward for uh everything, for health, for education, for broadband, for electric, for water, and that could go on and on because that's what we're here to do is to bring and enhance the quality of life here on our Navajo Nation. So again, uh, I would like to save this time to just thank you all. As you come back to work, again, prayers have been said and they'll continually be said for you all to, for protection and for uh ease of uh um our getting back to work. And so again, you know, these first few days are, it will be a little uncomfortable, but um, you know, just acknowledge that and, and go forth. And uh soon, very soon, we'll all have the full confidence to, to know that we are in the right place, doing what we need to do at the work and at the service of our Navajo people. Yeah, I appreciate you. One and all, thank you, Mr. President, again, for your great leadership. And now I'd like to pass it on to uh who is next? Dr. Jim, all right. I appreciate you, Dr. Jim. Ladies and gentlemen, the Executive Director of our Department of Health, Dr. Jill Jim.
Yes, thank you, President and also Vice President, um, for all the information this morning. I just want to thank everyone on the call. Um, I just want to just recognize my clan this morning. I'm currently the Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. And this morning, I just wanted to take some time to go over uh the information that was made available to everyone. Just to reiterate that, um, since March, um, I think the nation has gone through um, in working and combating the COVID nineteen and we've all taken um, our own self or an individual responsibilities to prevent COVID by um, every day doing preventive measures such as washing your hands, wearing your mask, um, cleaning, um, wherever you go, um, when you're doing errands or at home. So a lot of stuff that we've learned, um, since um, the beginning of this pandemic, I just hope that um, we all recognize that those are the very basic um tools that you need um, to live in this um pandemic to address this. It's really up to us. There is no cure, there's no vaccine. You can't just get a shot for this. Um, but those are the things that have worked. Um, so those are what we encourage um, as individuals are still at home working or either um have, are coming back to the facility or those that have been working all this time. I'm sure that you have all uh maintained those um cleaning practices and mask wearing indoors especially. So those are the things that I want to ensure today is wearing your mask indoors at all times. Um, so just to reiterate that, I just wanna go to the webpage for the um the reopening plan. So just so there's no confusion, um, as the Health Command Center, we're can, we're still operating during this, there's still a public health emergency. And so the, beside the um staff there that are coming back to work, the Command Center are still addressing this because as we are still initiating public health orders, um, uh, obviously, as I indicated, there is no cure or vaccine. So we're closely monitoring all the actions that we take here. And those actions are um, are influenced by what we do. So on the reopening page, there are two um pages here. And one is just for businesses. So here in the businesses reopening status is at orange code, which is at twenty-five percent. So these guidelines here on the reopening plan doesn't apply to um tribal government or federal government. So just to um reiterate that, as businesses uh begin to reopen when working with the tribal offices, if you work with any tribal offices or businesses, DT can allude to that. But a lot of the common best practices are on this webpage and then all the policies and procedures that need to be in place that address all the um preventive measures. Uh, number eight, I just wanna reiterate here, or if there are any suspected or confirmed cases of COVID among employees, so any places of business, private businesses, um, any business, um, they would need to report that to the Command Center at eight seven one seven zero one four. So that's just kind of a, a message that I want to just reiterate, um, because sometimes we don't hear about these exposures. And we need to hear about all of these exposures. So there's a phone number under this public health order um, that was initiated recently for all places of business for the reopening. They need to report all cases to the Command Center. And as mentioned before, a lot of the reopening are guided by gating criteria that are collected by epidemiologists um, working at the Command Center that includes Indian Health Service, the Navajo Nation and tribal health organizations. Under the UCG, the Unified Coordination Group, the whole Command Center is a combined effort of all healthcare entities across the Navajo Nation. And in order for um, the businesses to operate, um, the, we are looking at cases, we're looking at a decrease of cases, making sure there's no sustained um rebound, meaning that cases go, continue to go up, that tests positive on tests are available and we can have this um, report um, on this webpage in the future. But making sure positivity um rates means a number of positive tests that are um, out of the total test need to be low enough. And also there's testing availability. And that hospitals also um, are not um, reaching their full capacity. So these are the criteria that we look at in regards to um, making decisions um, regarding the reopening of businesses. And so on this webpage, you'll see the different um, status of what is allowed and not allowed. Uh, right now, we have um, under twenty-five percent of max occupancy. And JT can probably um add to this. Uh, right now, we have um, marinas and parks are um, open to the Navajo Nation but not open to tourists and visitors. So we just wanna reiterate that um, based on several laws that are in place. So definitions here can help um, addressing this. And you can click on the public health order here, implementing and the Navajo Nation reopening plan and declaring an orange status that was issued last week. So these are for businesses. So if businesses have questions, um, they can also call the Command Center as well as the DED. And now we have a, a whole webpage on the employees' works, work site safety guidelines. This is for um, the work site for the Navajo Nation employees. I hope the other entities can use this if businesses um, need to create a plan for their response. Um, I hope that some of this information is useful. Um, there will be a safety video that will be added to this webpage later, just for so the employees can um, get a better understanding of COVID nineteen. So continue to look at this webpage for any updates as those are working, um, those are working for the Navajo Nation. But it, like I indicated, I hope it's a resource for other businesses that can use some of these guidelines. So um there really took a lot of team effort um, in addressing the CDC guidelines. So it's definitely important that we follow these um, guidelines as it is a protect, a protection of ourselves and our coworkers. Also, by protecting ourselves and coworkers, we protect our family members and friends. Protecting clients, customers and partners we work with and also providing the best possible work under the circumstances. So those are the priorities of the divisions. And I, I hope that we uh work on these uh every day, um, starting today to better understand these guidelines and um, that the division directors should be working with their managers um, in a, in addressing this. But what I'm really gonna go into is, Dr. Fowler will speak on a lot of this, but I am just going here into the social, um, some of the, the COVID nineteen um, part of the um webpage here. Mainly making sure on number four, um, there is um, requiring staff to wear a commercial or homemade mask that completely covers them in the mouth and nose at all times while inside the work site. So there were uh masks that were distributed um, and with the divisions to ensure you have those. Um, they're following the CDC guidelines. Um, and there isn't any um, there is a wrong and a right in wearing masks, as you can see that in here. You have the mask here um, covering your complete nose and mouth here. Um, there are individuals that you might see um, wearing their mask down below or either some other direction. It's okay to let people know that um that they're wearing their mask incorrectly. And it's okay to tell people that um, that they need to preserve their entire mouth and nose. So that will be part of the same, um, the training video, but to ensure that you do wear some sort of mask while you're at work. Also, social distancing, um, keeping apart at all times as you're returning to work. Making sure that people aren't congregating. People shouldn't really, really having office uh luncheons or parties of some sort. Um, also reconfiguring workspace only if necessary and appropriate. And so there are some places that we might not be able to, that you might not be able to change the physical appearance of their offices and buildings. So once again, it's um, what is unnecessary and appropriate. If you have a lot of customer um contacts that you have at, with individuals at their front, you might need to have additional PPEs for them, um, such as a face mask or other barriers. But otherwise, and then, and the main administrative part of the buildings, um, you just want to make sure that uh, you're doing your best in order to address um, safe social distancing, which I also refer, we refer to or others refer to as physical distancing for employees as well. And then there's also the hygiene, infection prevention and cleaning. Educate personnel about requiring good hygiene and cleaning practices, making sure hand sanitizer and disinfecting wipes are available. hand sanitizer and disinfecting wipes are available, but due to the shortages, they might not be available. So your best bet is that you're have to wash your hands um at all um consistently over time if you don't have that available. There are other ways so of making sure that you do prevent COVID nineteen, encouraging individuals to wipe down frequently touch surfaces. Um at the Command Center, we have a bleach and water solution that we have available for staff to use to wipe down. Um there are workstations that are um spread out through the entire first floor of our building. So there are ways. Um COVID nineteen is easily killable, I guess, um through just solutions with this bleach and water. Um so there'll be more recommendations, written recommendations or information that can be made available. And just encouraging everyone to wash their hands frequently. And I think it's um that is what will save us and other individuals. It's a very basic preventive measures that we need to do and we've been iterating these, I think, over and over. Also, um other areas that we can look at is just um just the prevention of the uh so social distancing, hygiene and also um just understanding that if you need help, there is ways to reach out to the Command Center. There is a section on here that I want to go over case investigation and um contact tracing. Um knowing that with all the um not knowing that the processes and procedures, um this is a very good indication of what has to happen. There are phone numbers and there's processes, there's preparation, making sure that here and A for preparation that you um understand the guidance and also have basic information about COVID nineteen. Presymptomatic and asymptomatic, also instructions to stay home if you have any symptoms, requirements to wear a mask, instructions to call a manager, also description of um understanding leave policies and also um contacting the central hotline if you have any questions or exposures within your tribal offices and programs um and communicating that with the manager and then to um this hotline here where it does give a good description about employee is showing COVID nineteen symptoms. If a employee is showing them um COVID nineteen symptoms, they either will go to the hospital or they will notify their employer when they come to work. And so there's a process here on a diagram on what needs to take place. Also, meaning pay uh maintaining confidentiality of those that are reporting their um their sickness or illness or exposures is very highly encouraged that that information is kept confidential as well. And so and that's why we ask for sign in sheets at the in your offices to ensure that um individuals um are documented on who's in the building at what time and what time they leave. So encourage individuals to sign in and out because that will definitely support um any kind of case investigation that we need to occur in in the facility. Also, decisions returning regarding return to work. The Navajo Nation is using a symptom-based approach, not a testing-based strategy, but we do um include both in the policies and Dr. Fowler can go over that. But in this one, we um here we have the information about returning to work if you had COVID nineteen. There is time periods and also on day um specific duration of days that are recommended based on CDC guidelines and then also reopening and closing of um offices after an exposure as well. The entire facility does not need to be closed. So understand that part and then understand the time periods of when a person comes into the office that could be exposed, waiting for cleaning services and the type of cleaning services and who can return as as not close contact. So those are all um described here. And so just get familiar with those guidelines and always um understand the situation before anything um starts happening because there have been situations because in the as we have experienced, some of our off, some of us have been working here and the um all this time and we've had several exposures. So really know the and uh under and understand the process because we don't want to shut down a facility if um the situation is not really um it does not have enough evidence to show that a true exposure has happened. So I just wanted to reiterate that. So there is um all these um different guidelines on the webpage to get familiar with. So I just wanted to go over that briefly, but I uh want to encourage everyone to get familiar with all the different um guidelines that are in place. So uh thank you very much, um President, Vice President, and I'll um hand my time over to Dr. Fowler now. Thank you.
Yeah. And I serve as a Division Director for Human Resources. And good morning. Welcome back to employees. I want to first and first say thank you to all of you that have been abiding by our executive orders. And I know it's it's been difficult and it's been frustrating for quite a bit of all of us. And our deepest condolences is those of you that have lost loved ones. Make yourself strong, build back on your foundation. You probably did a lot of reflection. That's what I'm most thankful for. I'm in this office uh alone right now, so I'm gonna take my mask and make sure if it's uh more clear when you hear me. Again, uh I'm Perfilia Fowler. I'm the Division Director for Human Resources. Today, we're opening reopening gradually. Gradually means we do have some employees that are on staggered schedule that is gonna continue. We do have some programs and some divisions that have employees that are on group A, group B, group C. And we can't bring everybody back uh today. So we are working reoccupancy plan, reentry plan. They've been in the talks with each of the division directors. So we are relying our most of our division directors to go move forward with their plans, what they have in place. As you all know, our first executive order was back in March and we are now on our twenty-third week. And we we are returning reopening on our twenty-third week. So for the past twenty-two weeks and back in May, we've been talking about reopening. And as you're all aware, we've been extending. And so those are some of the things, the reopening, this what's need to happen, this is what's not included. So I really appreciate all the individual divisions that contributed to the reopening plan and to the safety guidelines that will really help you as an employees to look into. We are making sure that we do have the appropriate PPEs. We do have the um reevaluated some of the office reconfigurations. And for some of you that came to work this morning, you might have gotten your temperature checks. So those are all part of the new process, the new new work environment that we'll be facing. We are also looking at uh we did implement a telecommuting policy back in March. We also have a flexible work schedule. We respectfully request that each employee work closely with their program managers, directors, supervisors and even division directors to abide by the telecommuting policy. When you're working on the telecommuting policy, this is where I tell the managers to make sure that you know your people, you know the kind of people you're working with. Because there are some employees that travel quite a distance to and from work. We have employees that do not have uh uh appropriate internet access or broadband. So those are some of the things that we will that we should have been already evaluating and looking looking at with our programs. As you all heard this morning from our president, President, Vice President, our administrative leave is now canceled. However, during the time off as an Navajo Nation employee, you have been accruing uh admini- you have been accruing annual leave. So we know that we do have a lot of employees that have reached a maximum level again around this time last year. If you all remember that we had so many people that have a whole, a lot amount of um accrued leave and we didn't want to let people go all in the month of November and December. So what I as a division director had done, just using my program as an example, I told my program, you have so many uh accrued leave, you need to go ahead and start spreading it out from August, September because I may need you in November and December. So make sure that um I we know that you've all accrued some leave. So right now, there's no administrative leave. Once an executive order, the administrative leave is lifted. However, if there's an employee, if you're an employee, you're experiencing any COVID-related matters, you are more than welcome to look into the COVID leave, which was uh effective back in ma- uh June, June third with our oversight. Refer to that. There are ways to be eligible for those uh COVID leave and there's a maximum of a hundred and twenty hours. Work imme- work closely with your immediate supervisor. We do also have the office limited services. We do have some offices that have been open since March. Directors to identify your essential, non-essential programs. So those of us that are essential program, we we've been open since March. But for with limited services, that limited service is not gonna just be lifted today. We're not just gonna open the doors. We're still gonna follow a process and a procedure to where you might call a number that is posted on the door and go in one at a time, but still keep your social distance with six feet apart outside while you wait to be uh assisted. As you're all aware that it is budget season and we do have a lot of work that needs to be done. Some of our managers are have been on standby and are being called back. So most importantly, we want to make sure that we provide a safe environment for our employees. And with Dr. Jim indicating earlier, we don't want to experience no office parties. We're close closing off all the kitchen that areas, the lounge areas. Because like uh President stated, you know, we when we bring in a food, we take our mask off and you know, we eat while people are around. So we don't want to infect anybody. So we do, we will have our no shop personnel. We have a total of four. Yes, we do need more. And probably safety personnel will be going around to Winter Rock Fort Defiant, St. Michael's in that areas today and throughout the week and to make sure that we're all wearing appropriate uh face masks. And they're not going out there to give citations. We're just taking precautionary measures to make sure that you are wearing your mask, that you are six feet apart. If there's office reconfiguration that needs to happen, they'll inform you, they'll inform us. So we'll be getting an update from them. We're not forgetting about other offices in Shiprock, uh Chinling, uh Tubus City. Uh those areas, Crown Point, we'll also be sending our personnels out there to make sure that we are practicing social distancing and we are wearing our masks. Where it was also told to us that um our travel restriction is gonna remain. However, if you you have employees that are commuting to work and from work, we ask that you get with your program supervisor manager. And so as program managers and supervisors, get to know your employees if you not have done so because we do have employees that do commute to work. If you have to provide a flexible work schedule for the employee, come up with an agreement. If you have to telecommute one of your employees, come up with the agreement. We may have some differences. We may have some disagreements throughout the day. But by the end of the day, you have to understand that we're all professionals, that we're all working for our people. We may not feel that we we may not. There are some employees, there are some employees that indicate that you intimidate or that you you're putting me in a hostile environment. Because sometimes I had to train myself to make I my tone is a little bit lower because everybody's different. Our voice, the way it carries, it could be perceived differently. So and when you're as a supervisor, manager, director, if you're telecommuting, we told you there's more work, there should be more people, the same thing to your your workers. If you're gonna telecommute, you should have tasks, you should have assignments. There there's more work to for from where I come from, there's more work at telecommuting, there's more reports, there's more written documents. That's why I've been here, you know, I've been at work and you know, for me to take a break, it's it's kind of hard because so you have to look at it from all angles. So I'm really respectfully requesting that each of the program managers, supervisors, division directors, my colleagues, work collaboratively with your employees. So have respect for one another, care for one another. And as what I'm gonna end with is as employees of Navajo Nation, be truthful of your whereabouts. If you're not truthful, we have a really strict contact tracing system. You may think you're hiding it because some of you, I seen it already. You're coming back from Texas, you're coming back from Phoenix. I really hope that you're taking this fourteen-day quarantine seriously. Well, if I have to quarantine, there's no more administrative leave, what does that mean? You gotta take annual leave or you gotta take sick leave. That was your choice to leave the nation while we had an order saying for you to stay home. But yet you took it upon yourself to travel, to commute off the reservation and in a hotspot area. Even in now, these contact tracing is really important. And I really appreciate the leadership. You have questions, you're more than welcome to call us. You know, I know that we've all we're all experiencing this together and we will overcome it together again. We're going into this reopening gradually by phases. We don't want everyone back by one hundred percent today. But you know, we may have a program that has been practicing this, going fifty, seventy, seventy-five, eighty percent. I might have planned the one hundred percent today. Work closely with your division directors, your program managers and supervisors. So I'd like to add that Navajo piece at the end. So thank you, welcome back, and we look forward to seeing you around. And there's going to be more teleconference meetings. So make sure that you download our WebEx, because we prefer a lot of our WebEx, and then some of us use Zoom. So your program supervisor, manager may call upon you to be part of these meetings. Learn how to have your telecommuting meetings from home or either from the workplace. Uh, Mr. JT Willie, yeah, good to see you.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Fowler, I don't know. Just wanted to say good morning and thank you for tuning in this morning to the town hall. And also welcome back, as you can see, to our Navajo Nation employees. Uh, the Division of Economic Development has pretty much been essential since about June, July, little by little, we've been bringing back more staff to work. We have a lot of work that needs to get done. So that's what we've, we've been accomplishing these past couple of weeks, these couple of months. And now moving forward today with the official reopening of the Navajo Nation. We have staff that have came in this morning, this morning, myself, plus my crew, we're out here, basically just welcoming everybody back to work. Uh, we provided the, um, safety guideline, the safety guideline needed, and all areas taken for each of our offices. We also have one specific to the Division of Economic Development. Uh, Dr. Dr. Jim mentioned earlier the reopening plan for the Navajo Nation. Uh, this is in particular to our businesses here throughout the Navajo Nation. So the division, and as Dr. Jim has mentioned, is working with all of our businesses through an opening strategy. And then the, the plan that's located online entails a guideline that is guided by a color code. And the color code is divided up between different areas of how we should operate our businesses throughout the Navajo Nation. Any business that has a question or concern may reach out to the Health Command Center and may also contact us here at DED. Our phone number is 928-871-6544. So right now, as Dr. Jim had mentioned, we're in the orange status. So the orange status indicates that it's moderate, moderate-high restrictions. Therefore, we're in a 25% occupancy. The 25% occupancy applies to all of the business sectors on Navajo. That does not apply to the tribal government offices. So therefore, these limit a lot of our dining and waiting establishments to drive-through only, which have been taking place already. Our barber shops, hair salons, may resume their operation by appointment only. And then also make sure that you're clean and sanitized between each of your appointments. The marinas and parks are also authorized in compliance to open up their businesses. And then again, in this particular phase that we are in, we are not allowing any youth programs, casinos, video poker, museums, flea markets and roadside markets. As you have seen these last couple of weeks, within this past two-week timeframe, we've had quite a few roadside sales take place. And I would like to remind you to be very cautious, because it goes against the opening guideline of the Navajo Nation. And as I have mentioned to those individuals, you want to be careful, because the more comfortable you get, the more in line you're going to be with causing a possible spread of the virus. And as Shitui Dr. Fowler mentioned earlier, the contact tracers go in line in all areas possible. And if they find out that your roadside sale or flea market was a cause to that particular spread, your name will come up, your business will come up, your community and what have you. So I would like to remind you that they are not allowed at this time. And our gyms, recreational facilities and movie theaters are also unfortunately not allowed at this time. So moving forward, our, our ultimate goal here at the division is to work with all of our businesses to ensure that they're CDC compliant, that they're in line with our health commands, operation, and that we're making sure that we're keeping safety, not only for the clients, but also for the employees of these establishments. So this morning, we had quite a few staff return back to work today. We have them on staggered schedules, we have individuals that came in this morning. We have more that will be coming in this afternoon. We have individuals coming back until tomorrow. So with the welcoming, uh, as mentioned, our division is supplying all of the employees with at least 10 face masks. The 10 face masks will be used for your protection, for cleaning and rotating out throughout the week. And so those can be requested from us. They're also available for the public, we've been doing them all summer long. Uh, thank you to the staff, the individuals, the seamstress, the sewers, even our interns who have seen this project through. That website to apply for those items is www.inncovidprevention.com. We also ensure that we're giving you instructions on how to clean the mask and how to rotate those masks when you come back to work or wherever you may go. So upon the return to work, employees receive their, uh, some hand sanitizer. Uh, thank you to Navajo Nation Shopping Centers Incorporated that provided that. They also received the safety guide and guideline. And that was mentioned earlier from our Dr. Jim and Dr. Fowler with their return to work. And then from our leadership, Navajo Nation President, Vice President, on setting up our offices for, for the return. So as you can see here, we've outlined areas where employees are to ensure social distancing when they come into the office. At this time, our office here in St. Michael's, the Carrigan Complex, is only allowing employees only. So when you need to come in, you need to schedule appointments to meet with specific individuals. Again, our phone number is 928-871-6544. We also have other offices that occupy this building, Navajo Human Rights Commission and the Navajo Nation Tax Commission Offices. So as you come into our office here, you're able to see, and as you come in, all of our areas are set up. And what we have in place is that we have a security guard that we brought on staff that's assisting us and ensuring that we're keeping our employees safe. And this gentleman takes your temperature. So I'm cleared to enter the building. And then of course, I have to come in, I have to sign in. And upon signing in, Mr. Wade over here, our security guard sanitizes the pen, sanitizes the area. And if I'm an employee here that I'm allowed into the building, I can go to my work area and I can continue my workday throughout the day. So those are the different steps that we're taking into place here at the Division of Economic Development. Any questions regarding the guideline, regarding the return to work, the business plan portion, please reach out to our offices here in St. Michael's, 928-871-6544. Welcome back to many of you that are coming back to work today and continue to stay vigilant, stay aware of your surroundings.
Uh, my name is Doreen McCall and I'm the Attorney General for the Navajo Nation. And I'm, um, reiterating the words of the leadership here and my colleagues just in terms of welcoming our employees back to the Navajo Nation government offices, uh, whether you're here physically in the buildings or whether you are telecommuting from an alternate work site or working a flex schedule so that you can tend to all of your obligations. We just want to welcome you back. It's been a long road, um, to get to where we are today. Uh, we, as Dr. Fowler said and as President's mentioned, there's been a lot of planning, uh, to prepare for today, to bring our staff back to the offices so that we can continue the important services for Navajo people and for our government. Um, so I just want to, uh, thank the leadership and thank the work of, uh, my colleagues in, in preparing for, uh, today's reopening for the Navajo Nation Government. Uh, what I want to go over today are, um, is one document here uh, that was signed yesterday, and I know it's being distributed today. It's a Public Health Emergency Order Number 21. Uh, Dr. Fowler mentioned that we've, um, um, been going, uh, since March with our public health emergency orders. And this one is particularly exciting because, uh, I think in March 20th is when we implemented the first, um, shelter-in-place and stay-at-home order. And this Public Health Emergency Order Number 21, um, rescinds the stay-at-home orders so that people can be out and about. What it does instead is it implements what's called a safer in place, or safer-at-home, uh, Public Health Emergency Order. And that is based on CDC guidance, um, that the safest place to be is at home. Uh, and that travel increases your chances of getting infected and spreading COVID-19. So staying, staying at home is the best way, uh, to protect yourself and others from getting sick. So with, um, our staff returning to the work sites, um, you know, the ability to be able to, um, to travel to your offices, um, is important that there's not a shelter-in-place order so that you can get around to tend to your businesses. However, um, you know, and I think that this has been measured, or this has been mentioned by I think everyone who's spoken today that, you know, in order to get to the place where we are today to be able to reopen, it's taken a lot of work, not just on behalf of, um, the people who've spoken today and our, and the, uh, other leaders and colleagues working for the Navajo Nation, but the staff, uh, and, uh, individuals at home who, uh, who did their part to, uh, flatten the curve and slow the spread on the Navajo Nation so that we can reopen, uh, even in a phased, uh, re, um, um, schedule, um, to be safe. And so part of what the, the Public Health Emergency Order goes over is sort of the background of the shelter-in-place that's been in, in effect, um, the, since March 20th. Uh, that March 20th order that implemented the shelter-in-place also required visitors to return home. Um, and then, uh, also, uh, June 5th, Public Health Emergency Order Number 17 advised visitors to refrain from traveling, uh, to the Navajo Nation. And that was based on the guidance from CDC that I mentioned, as well as the, uh, law that President mentioned, uh, that closes the roads to visitors and to tourists. And since none of our parks are currently open, there will be additional guidance on when, uh, visitors can, uh, return, uh, to traveling, uh, to the Navajo Nation as a, as a tourist spot. Um, but in order to continue, uh, to move forward in the phased reopening, uh, in a safe and diligent manner, it's really important for our staff to practice all of the preventive me, uh, measures that were mentioned, uh, by, uh, Dr. Jim, um, as well as by, uh, President. Uh, and JT mentioned the masks. Um, I just received my allocation of masks here in the office. I also want to thank the donors for providing, uh, masks in bulk to the nation. We are still receiving those here at the Department of Justice and, uh, facilitating those to the Department of Economic Development so that those can be distributed, not just within, within the government, but, um, to the public as well. Uh, but the preventative measures that are listed in the Public Health Emergency Order include wearing masks. I do want to remind everybody that masks are required on the nation. They've been required since April. Um, I know that New Mexico still requires masks in public. Uh, Utah and Arizona do not, but they are required on the Navajo Nation. Um, and they're also required in, in, while you're at the workplace. Um, also, uh, social and physical distancing. Uh, Dr. Fowler talked about NOSHA coming around. I know that some of the offices have already been reconfigured, um, with Plexiglas, if not, um, you know, more physical distancing. Uh, but to also, uh, including washing your hands frequently for 20 seconds, disinfecting, uh, high-touch surface areas and avoiding unnecessary travel. Uh, you heard President say that even for, uh, even though we're doing a phased reopening, that travel for staff is still restricted. Off-regis, off-reservation travel is still not allowed. And then, um, the final one in the executive, uh, the Public Health Emergency Order is to avoid unnecessary public gatherings. So some of the things that, uh, the nation is also doing that was mentioned to keep the employees safer is to allow for the flex schedule and telecommuting. Um, JT, uh, demonstrated the temperature screening that's going to be, uh, occurring at the offices. Uh, Dr. Jim mentioned the safety video that will be available and required for employees. Um, and there will also be a daily questionnaire form that you will have to fill out, um, just acknowledging, um, your, um, wellness for the day, as well as any, um, potential contact with anyone who is symptomatic or COVID-positive over a period of ti, of time. Uh, and then guidance if you're al, also sick. Um, so those are some of the things that have been going on to, to, um, to plan for, for today. Uh, the Public Health Emergency Order also, um, in addition to talking about safer-at-home as the, uh, instead of staying at home, is also to allow the requirements for drive-in gatherings, uh, where you stay in your car and you park the appropriate distance apart and you continue to wear your mask and that the gathering is conducted in a no-contact manner. Uh, President mentioned the, uh, distributions that had gone out into the communities that were conducted in that no-contact, uh, fashion. And we know from those, um, those distributions, uh, where, uh, no one got sick, that those are, those are practices that work. Um, the other thing that the, the Public Health Emergency Order does is just to remind folks that the curfew hours from 9:00 to 5:00 a.m. daily, 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. daily, remain in effect for all individuals on the Navajo Nation. And there's currently a 32-hour weekend lockdown for the remainder of August. And so, uh, staying home from Saturday at 9:00 p.m. until Monday at 5:00 a.m., there will be nothing open, uh, so that we can continue to, um, um, curb the spread of COVID-19 on the nation. And, you know, it's been mentioned by everybody here that, uh, you know, everybody's been doing a really good job with helping to slow the spread and to flatten the curve here on the Navajo Nation. And so you should be, uh, commended for your part in those efforts, because it takes, um, every single one of us, um, participating in those requirements that our public health, uh, experts, um, uh, lay out for us based on the science and the data to keep, uh, not only ourselves sa, safe and our families safe, but our communities safe and our Navajo Nation safe. Um, and then just with the, I mentioned this at the outset, uh, just the reminder that for visitors and tourists that for the duration of the declared public health emergency, uh, that, uh, visitors, um, the nation's roads are closed and that visitors are advised to refrain from traveling to the Navajo Nation. Tribal parks will not be accessible to visitors and tourists at this time. And with the phased reopening of the Navajo Nation, visitors will be informed by Public Health Emergency Order when the Navajo Nation can safely welcome visitors back to the nation. And as I mentioned at the outset, when the shelter-in-place order was implemented in March, visitors at that time were asked to return home. They were required to return home. And so that's been ongoing for, for many months here. Um, so that's what I wanted to share about the Public Health Emergency Order. I know there's also an, uh, emerg, um, executive order that will be issued today. And so I'll turn this back over to the, the leadership. Um, and then if they want me to go over the executive order, I will certainly do that. But, uh, welcome back, we are very happy, uh, to have you back. We are very happy, uh, to have you back and to be able to safely open the Navajo Nation government at this time. Yeah.
Press VP. Yes, the one?
All right. Thank you, uh, Attorney General McPaul and all of the, uh, Division Directors, JT Willie, Dr. Jim, Dr. Fowler, for the presentation and the hard work that all our directors have done on behalf of the Navajo Nation. And so as we reopen the nation, we want to just let everybody know once again that to follow the protocols, the guidelines that are in place, as well as taking care of yourselves and one another throughout this unprecedented times. We also just signed an executive order. And let me, uh, read the executive order. The Executive Order 009-20 related to the Navajo Nation State of Emergency Due to the Coronavirus, Resuming Services of Navajo Nation Government Offices and Related Entities. This will be sent out to our Navajo Nation employees. The executive order acknowledges that the state of emergency that was declared for COVID-19 will remain in place. The other is that the Navajo Nation shall resume government services. All administrative leave is canceled. Designated essential and non-essential employees shall all return to work today. It also has information on the work plan, the reopening plan, and the Division of Department, I'm sorry, Department of Personal Management's website. So that will be issued out to the Navajo Nation employees today. Adoro, nichi kodo. Uh, yik'e nichidne na'ha ndalneshigi. Nichi, nichidne ya ndalneshigi. A'xe, tabidi ni'shi dolel. Adoro, nichin'a neshu das, eni gi da ba'xe ni'tse. Adoro, kho'shi ta'da hul'ya, neni gi ena n'txe ni'tse kodil'neh dolel kodoo. Bahon neh. Ha ta'da hul'ya. Sk'iro shun'neh. And, you know, I'm wearing a mask because I'm at the office now. Uh, and to conclude, you know, COVID-19 has pretty much impacted and touched many Navajo Nation employees and Navajo Nation citizens. Some of you may have known someone who got the virus. Or maybe you, you got the virus, but you overcame. Some of us probably know or have a relative who lost their life to this virus. So our thoughts and prayers go out to everyone. Navajo Nation employees, Navajo Nation citizens. And we can't let down. We gotta continue to wear our masks. We gotta continue social distance. We gotta continue to wash our hands, keep our, uh, work surrounding, our space, uh, clean. And staying home as much as we can. If we gotta go to work, we gotta go to work. But staying home is the safest place to be. We recognize that many people throughout the Navajo Nation have, um, seen the direct impact of this virus. And we all know that COVID-19 is no joke. There's no vaccine. We need to continue to keep each other and hold each other accountable. You see somebody out there not wearing a mask or doing these protocols? Please let them know respectfully that they need to keep themselves safe and of course, the surrounding, other people safe. And so we wish you all well. Uh, some sense of, uh, normalcy will come back. And we will overcome this virus. We will get through this. We are a strong people, Navajo Nation. We have gone through some tough times in our history. And you know those stories. Some of you may be going through some hardship right now. But we will all help each other to overcome this virus or some of the things that we're going through personally at home. Vice President mentioned that families are coming back together because students are at home, parents were at home. I hear a lot of harvest is happening with, uh, our fruits and vegetables. We taught and we handed down our teaching from one generation to the next. Marriages have healed. And so there's some positive things that have come through this hardship. But of course, there are people that are still struggling. And let us refocus our efforts to continue to make our Navajo people strong, to be resilient. And we will overcome this virus by working together, everyone. We appreciate our Navajo Nation employees. We can't say that enough. You are the backbone of this Navajo Nation government. And I know that with your help, we can change the nation for the future. So God bless each and every one of you. Take care of yourself. Adoro adha huya shwore. Ad'e na'ha ndalneshigi. Adoro, nichik'e nichidne do ba'da hul'ya. Ar'cha tsodat'ohs'zen. Ashwore. Na'ha'cha ni'tze no'da di'neh kodoo shanab'el. E'kot'a e'ni ch'eh, ananas si'to leh. Khol'tsoh she'ya town hall meeting eda il'ya'do leh. So to conclude the town hall, we will have a closing prayer by Dr. Fowler. Dr. Fowler, can you close us in prayer?
Oh, yeah. Um, president, vice president, colleagues. Adoro, aden na'hi'so'ka'iki, n'tchak'ot na'ha'xe ni'tzen. Oko kodoo she'ee o. Ah kui ch'eh e'kho'n, nichidza'ndre ni. Be'eni t'ero, be'et'ta tsodil'zen leh. Kot'a she'ee kodoo tsod'zen, tsodadi dil'zeni. Kud'e ho'joroleh, shamanaha san li ni. Adoro kho'ya d'elchil. Adoro bet'ha'ino la'i, di'en d'ne'edan ohlini. Ah dan san'e, be'dan hid'och'eni di'bin'i bi'ehon hid'ahnahi gal'leh. Ha she'ins'ego kho'n, d'ne'bel cha'hotz'ab'ekha'e kho'n d'neh. Est'huysani t'elke'chuk'ey dan lin'i na'ha de'ilni she. Na'ha ba'ana holiyan doleh, lebi kit'at'on lebi si'ta'aj. Ye'ego kona'na'sh'innli ni, yich'eh'cha'ol'neh on'ha'ins'endoleh. Adoro nas'g'one'tne'je'kho'n, bina'na'shin'a'ne'tli doleh. Bina'na'sh'bil'ek es'lan'i yich'eh'na'ol'ni doleh. Ha't'ei she'ebina'na'shi'ithl'eni, n'juno ya ant'ekhes oleh. Adoro n'juno i'tl'ii doleh. Adoro ha she'ins'ego kona't'a'n i dan'li'lt'ohon. N'juno na'ha d'ns'endoleh, de'dis'endoleh. Adoro ha she'ins'ego e'ro kho'n bina't'a'hol'no. Do bina't'a'ho'an kui ch'eta di'ta. Ha she'ins'ego kho'n d'ne'pan'ahas'ka'ed n'juno iyo'yo'no. Kho'n yil'nanal'ny'to leh, sa'dya't'ehi. Tsod'zen ya't'ehi n'juno ye'elch'eh'el'te, n'juno ye'elchan'sekhes on'ha'ins'endoleh. Nas'g'one'tne'je'e'kho'n d'ne'adan lin'i kho'n be'ka'ana'neh il'wet'oh. Ni'tze no'kho'n e'ya't'e'ho'n hin'ana'sh'ni hil'ek'e na'anas'la do, na'na'shi ya't'e'ho'n. Ena'neh il'ii doleh, bel'la na'ni il'aa doleh. Galo na'na'sh'innli ni e'ha she'ins'ego, n'hiza'ats'odo ha she'ins'ego. Al'al'al'al'ado, i'shin ha'ik'e di'es'lan leh kho'n. Be'ena'ni t'ero kho'n, wa'de ya't'e'go ben hi'l'ahas'aa doleh. Adoro na'na'sh'innli ni est'huysani t'elke'chuk'ey dan lin'i. Ha i'shin yik'aj'op'a ins'eni kho'n ba'ins'endoleh. Adoro kho'n de'k'os'oyat'e kho'n al'toha, neni di'ch'eh nichit'al'todoleh. N'juno kho'n n'hasan be'ka'ana'neh k'edo. N'juno kho'n nas'g'ol'la kho'n, hina'da yel'ch'alt'oleh. Kodo sh'na'sh'amanaha san li ni kho'n. Ah't'e'go she'ut'ats'od'zen li ni kho'n ben yich'eh'hananas si'to leh. Ah kui ch'eh ha she'ins'ego. Al'al'ani tze no'kho'n tsod'zen t'elch'ha. Ya't'e'go na'ha'na'ila'do leh, nichit'sod'zeni. Adoro nichit'sod'zen li ni, na'ha'da di'ena'da in'os'endoleh. Kho'n shamanaha san a'ja she. Al'al'at'a'neh yin'ad'ait'ero, al'al'at'a'neh yot'la'anas'la'de. Be'ena'ha'hol'ya shamanaha san li ni kho'n aan'ilt'ho. Ah kho'n ah kui ch'eh kho'n jop'a'ini tze leh. Adoro yit'ahl'den hio'wan'ahas'aa'de, ya't'e'ho ban'aha k'edo leh. Adoro kho'n wa'de nas'ka'e kho'n, ha'ach'endan lin'i, nich'ol'ne dan lin'i. Ya't'e'ho ban'aha k'edo leh, kho'n ni'tze. Adoro ya't'e'ho e'kho'n nas'g'oneh hina'da yel'ch'alt'oleh. Nich'ho'wan'hi k'ot'adech'eh, hio'wan'esh'kish'nas'k'abo. N'juno ya't'e'ho ban'aha k'edo leh. Kot'a e'tsod'zen a'han'she, de'k'odo ben na'hananas si'to leh. Na'han'dan'la'do leh, adoro ha she'ins'ego ya't'e'ho ben na'ha'ana holiyan doleh. Ah di'neh ben yich'eh'ho'jona'sli, ho'jona'sli, 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 ho'jona'sli. Yeah, Mr. President.
All right. That concludes our town hall meeting. Any questions, uh, please contact, uh, Department of Health, Health Command Operations Center, Department of Personnel Management, and Dr. Fowler's, uh, Division of Human Resources. So God bless you. Thank you so much. Take care. I'll go on it.